Thank you very much. At this council meeting, well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 1st council meeting of the Mesa City Council. All of our council is present via Zoom. At this council meeting, we will be taking comments via both the telephone and the Internet. You can find multiple ways to participate on the first page of the council agenda. Additionally, if you want to speak, you should submit a blue card one hour before the meeting. Again, you can find that information on the first page of the agenda and at mesaz.gov/BlueCard. Before we begin our meeting with a moment of silence, I'd like to say something about the unrest that we're experiencing in our United States. Our country, our state, and our city are hurting. The angst, anxiety, and economic uncertainty from global pandemic followed by another incident of police brutality has put us all on edge. The combination of events has injected feelings of raw anger and fear across cities, especially in communities of color. I want to thank Mesa residents for keeping the peace and taking care of each other through these rough times. I pray that the violence we have seen both across this country and locally will end soon so that healing and meaningful change can begin. I want to thank the Mesa Police Department, who has been monitoring and assisting in a very significant way with this situation, both day and night. They are actively focusing on building relationships with our communities of color, with events and programs designed to strengthen understanding and promote safety. As you all know, a statewide curfew began last night and will continue each night from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM until next Monday, June 8th. Exceptions to the curfew include traveling to and from work, religious services, caring for a person or animal, patronizing a private business, seeking medical care, or fleeing a dangerous situation. Right now, the city of Mesa is filming a two-part series to give our communities of color a platform to discuss the impact of George Floyd's death and to ask questions of our police chief, Ken Cost. We will address, in these videos, we will address community concerns and questions, and cover the training of our police department and programs we have in place at the Mesa Police Department that are designed to ensure a safe environment for both the public and our police officers. Part one of these videotapes will feature members of the African-American community, and I'm happy to participate in scheduling that or taping that this Thursday. We'll now proceed with our meeting. We'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in standing for the moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is to take action on the consent agenda. We'll ask, as is our custom, Mr. Kevin Christopher, to read the consent agenda for the council. Mr. Christopher?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings, is written. Item 3A, Act on Recommendation of the Judicial Advisory Board to reappoint City magistrate or judicial lawyer to a two-year term beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2022. Item 4A, Act on Contract to Purchase or Replacement Field Lighting, the Skyline Park for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4B, Act on One-Year Renewal with a One-Year Renewal Option to the Term Contract for Police Motorcycle Maintenance and Repair Services for the Police Department. Item 4C, Act on Contract to Purchase One Automated Extraction Instrument for DNA Analysis for the Police Department. This purchase is funded by the National Institute of Justice Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Production Grant. Item 4D, Act on Three-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for Police Service Dogs for the K-9 Unit for the Mesa Police Department. Item 4E, Act on Contract to Purchase One Replacement Airborne Video Downlink Solution for the Mesa Police Department. The initial purchase is funded by 2019 Homeland Security Grant and 2017 reallocated funds from Homeland Security Grant. Item 4G, Act on One-Year Renewal with a One-Year Renewal Option, the Term Contract for Utility Adjustment Services for the Transportation Department. Item 4H, Act on One-Year Renewal with a One-Year Renewal Option to the Term Contract for Class 400 Gas Meters for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 4I, Act on Contract for Ropes and Electrical Substation East Bay Transformer Switch Gear Replacement Construction Manager at Risk, GMP Number 2, project fundings from the 2014 authorized electric bonds. Item 5A, Act on Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Suspend Enforcement, Temporarily Modify or Approve Alternatives to Requirements or Specifications in the Mesa City Code related to Outdoor Seating and Services for Eating and Drinking Establishments and Temporary Sinage for All Businesses and Organizations to Minimize the Health and Economic Effects of the COVID-19 Pandemic During the Declaration of Emergency. Item 5B, Act on Resolution Designating the General Election Date as November 3rd, 2020, and the Purpose of the General Election, including Providing the Deadline for Filing Arguments for and Against Ballot Measures, Deadlines for Voter Registration, and Providing the Times that Polls Will Be Open. Item 5C, Act on Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Submittal to HU of the Second Substantial Amendment to the City of Mesa Annual Action Plan, Fiscal Year 2019-2020, and the Third Substantial Amendment to the Five-Year Consolidated Plan for Fiscal Years 2015-2016 through 2019-2020 for Proceed of Emergency Solutions Grant COVID-19 Program and the Reprogramming of Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant Funds in Response to the Coronavirus Pandemic, and Authorizing the City Manager to Expand, Disperse, and Enter into Agreements for Dispersment of ESG-CV and CDVG Funds. Item 5D, Act on Resolution Approving and Authorizing the City Manager to Disperse Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Human Service Funds to Nonprofit Organizations for Activities Approved by City Council and to Enter into Agreements for Dispersment of the Funds. Item 5E, Act on Resolution Vacating a Portion of Road Right-of-Way on Old Lee High Road between North Gilbert Road and East McDowell Road, located at 2126 East Lee High Road, to Allow Property Owner Ingress and Egress from the West Side of the Property. This was Requested by the Property Owner. Item 5F, Act on Resolution Extingishing of Public Utilities and Facilities Easement, Located on the Southwest Corner of South Palmroy and East Main Street, to Accommodate the Construction of a Building as Part of the Grid Project. This was Requested by the Developer. Item 5G, Act on Resolution Authorizing the Defeesance and Redemption of a Portion of the City's Outstanding Taxable Utility Systems Revenue Bonds, Series 2020, Both America Bonds Direct Pay, and Utility Systems Revenue Bonds, Series 2014. Item 5A, Check on Resolution Loving the Amount to Be Collected by a Secondary Property Tax and the Rate Upon Each $100 of Assessed Valuation of Properties Subject to Taxation Within the City of Mesa for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2021. The Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Secondary Property Tax Rate Represents a 6% Reduction from the Prior Year's Tax Rate. Item 6A, Introduction of Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Title 1, Chapter 7 of the Mesa City Code, Pertaining to City Magistrates to Formalize Term of Office for the Presiding City magistrate and Clarify the Term of Office for the City Magistrates, and Amending Title 2, Chapter 3 of the Mesa City Code, Pertaining to the Judicial Advisory Board to Formalize the Appointment and Reappointment Process for the Presiding City magistrate, and Clarify the Presiding City magistrate's Authority to Appoint magistrates pro town. Item 7A has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 7B, Act on Ordinance Amending Sections 9-11-3 through 9-11-5 of the Mesa City Code, Pertaining to Flood Plane Regulations and the National Flood Insurance Program, and Adopting by Reference Flood Plane Management Regulations, Flood Insurance Study, and Flood Insurance Rate Maps. Item 7C, Act on Ordinance Regarding ZON 20-00030. This is for Property Generally Located West of Crispin Road on the South Side of Southern Avenue, Arizona Site Planner View to Allow for Multi-Residence Development. Item 7D, Act on Ordinance Modifying Rates for Residential Water Utility Services. This Establishes a 30% Discount Rate Off the Water Service Charge for Qualified Low-Income Senior Residents. Item 8A, Act on Ordinance Regarding ZON 18-00483. This is for Property Located on the West Side of Ellsworth Road for the Railroad, Arizona to Allow for a Mixed Use Development. Item 8B, Approving and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into a Development Agreement with Sunbelt Land Holdings relating to More Than 70 Acres of Property Located at Northwest Corner of Ellsworth Road and Point 22 Boulevard, the Purpose of Developing a Mixed Use Development. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Chris. Can we have, Kevin, could you go back and read, because we didn't quite hear it, but could you read items, repeat for the record, items 4F and 4H, please?
Okay. Item 4F, let me grab that there, that's, hold on just a minute. This is Act on Dollar Limit Increase the Term Contract for Polyethylene Natural Gas Pipe and Fittings for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. And Item 4H, Act on One-Year Renewal with a One-Year Renewal Option to the Term Contract for Class 400 Gas Meters for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources Department.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Freeman, are you making, I'm sorry, are you making a motion for the approval of consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Luna is seconding that motion. Before we vote on that, Ms. Mickelson, are there any blue cards for a consent agenda item other than item 7A, which has been removed from the consent agenda?
No additional requests, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda. We will do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. And I vote aye as well, so that motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is item 7A. As we had a lengthy discussion on this agenda item in our study session immediately prior to this meeting, for those who maybe missed that meeting, this agenda item has to do with modifications to the Form-Based Code for zoning districts in downtown Mesa. Council, is there anyone who has, would like to discuss this item? Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Duff?
Do we have some blue cards? I'm willing to also say my piece at any time, but I didn't know what order you wanted to address this.
Thank you very much. You're right. Let's hear it from the blue card. Ms. Mickelson, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
Yes, we have five requests, Mayor. All of them wish to have their comments read.
Okay, so you're going to read their comments, is that correct?
I'll read their comments, correct.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Please proceed.
The first comment card is from Terri Benelli, who opposes this item, and she says, "Mayor Giles, Councilwoman Duff, my representative and Mesa councilman, imagine you are a shop owner looking to relocate, looking to locate your small retail outlet or restaurant. A destination that has foot traffic and is so close to two light rail stops, a destination that is between two thriving universities, and a destination that is across the street from where half a million people park to visit an internationally awarded art center seems like an excellent choice and viable destination. The same block that is so centrally located to thousands of people on foot also happens to be the only retail for blocks. From Center Street, heading east, you must walk at least four city blocks past the Mesa Temple to get a near, to get to the nearest retail, a small strip center. Now imagine what happens when this opportunity to support the community by providing potential gathering space to meet all of those folks in our community is denied and instead turned into identical residential units that are neither interesting to walk by or engaging. Not only is this opportunity denied, but a plan is put together by a group of dedicated citizens is overturned to deny this opportunity. I am referring to the Central Main Plan, the Downtown Mesa Urban Summit, 10 years of community learning and fiercely supporting transit-oriented development. I am referring to council members like Mr. Thompson, who took the time to understand the value of transit-oriented development along a commercial corridor, denied. This is the decision you are making this evening, all on speculative advice, speculation about what the folks who have already invested in downtown want without asking them and the recommendation of city staff who do not live in this neighborhood. Think about what it feels like to walk from Center to McDonald along either side of Main Street. Now think about what it feels like to walk past a successfully and totally occupied Cimarron Apartments on First Street. Councilwoman Duff, I know you can picture this, as I am sure you have walked the Center to McDonald's Stretch a million times. You lived on that walk. I would also imagine that the walk past the Cimarron Apartments has been much less frequent. There is really no reason to walk east from Center except exercise. What if there was a reason? Maybe the next Worth Sandwich Shop, maybe the new gang plank that was the impetus for downtown Chandler, successful walkable commercial district. I am pleading with you from the perspective of someone who would move to downtown Mesa for a walkable urban lifestyle next to transit, to please vote against this ordinance change. I am asking you to also encourage opus development to actually learn what this community wants, which honestly, from the well-attended rail meeting last week, is not a suburban development with less density than any project in East Mesa. I am also asking you to send the message to the rest of the development community watching your decision tonight to abide by the plan so many of us took hours away from our families to develop and vote against this ordinance that takes away all predictability for a developer to have confidence in our downtown that their investment will be protected by our current plans. I am asking you to support the community that knows that with density comes a thriving commercial corridor and new opportunities to meet our neighbors and take full advantage of this precious square mile in downtown Mesa by committing to the highest and best use of our land." The next speaker card is from Augie Gastelum, and he also opposes this item, and he says, "Today you will be voting on amendment to the Form-Based Code that is obviously being done for the benefit of the proposed development at the old Brown and Brown site. I have a few issues with the proposed change and with the process that this development has taken, specifically the lack of community engagement and community input for this project and for this proposed amendment. The idea of reducing the amount or retail space along East Main Street seems pretty short-sighted, especially as we continue to see redevelopment between Center and Mesa Drive. We should have been having a conversation with the developer to develop this piece of property in increments, not all once to a finished state. Instead, we are amending our Form-Based Code for what I would consider a mediocre development at best, for this site and in its current state. We have an opportunity to do something great with this site, and once the site is fully developed, the opportunity will never come up again. I urge you to vote no or to take a pause and give this vote more time by continuing this item so you can get more community involvement before you make a concession to a developer who is not meeting the community needs. You will vote the way you vote, but expect a more engaged community as this project continues to evolve." The next speaker card is from David Kermy, and he's in opposition to this item, and he says, "Mesa's Form-Based Code was developed alongside the Central Main Plan, which included an advisory committee of 26 members, who met 21 times over a year fleshing out the plan, including three public meetings, a special advisory board from the Economic Development Advisory Board to analyze economic development implications and additional public outreach and meetings in the community. The former Brown and Brown site is an immense opportunity for downtown, and to amend our Form-Based Code and our community plan without involving the community substantially is a travesty against the work we have all put in to build our shared downtown. Please deny or continue this motion until a meaningful amount of community involvement has been done and that allows us to review what is being proposed and why. Additionally, I am concerned about the vagueness of the language, especially whether the items noted in New Footnote P4 Sections 1158-3B and 1158-10G of the FBC are all required, or if is available as a pick and choose selection. If it is pick and choose from the five items listed, it is completely unacceptable. Unfortunately, the language is vague and does not read to require all five items to be present. Exceptions and carve-outs for projects are more in line with small projects that would otherwise not make sense. It makes one wonder why we are creating exceptions and carve-outs for our community-developed plan for only the largest projects in the largest and fewest of vacant lots in our community. The city's Form-Based Code has many incentives for developers, including expedited review with reduced community outreach requirements, if and only if it meets that code. Modifying that code without substantial community outreach and reflection goes against the spirit of Mesa's work and history. Our downtown is a shared responsibility, and we have worked for years together to build a strong, vibrant, and spectacular downtown. Let's not rush to amend our code without returning to the community that developed to the vision in the first place." The next comment card is from Dean Newans, in support of this item, and he says, "Transit-oriented development is most successful when a mixture of uses coalesces around transportation nodes. TOD principles rely heavily on developments that bring living, working, and socializing together within a connected neighborhood. One very important aspect to this activity is to ensure the streetscape is alive and vibrant. Zoning codes help with this by requiring activated uses along commercial corridors. One challenge is identifying enough commercial uses to populate the amount of activated uses required when the market is not ready. Unoccupied or dark spaces actually detract from this sense of place. The goal for retail and commercial spaces is to provide the greatest flexibility to meet market demand. By creating a commercial-grade core and shell that provides for flexibility of use is a strong way to let the market drive tenancy. The proposed land-use language being considered provides the best opportunity to create and construct the infrastructure allowing a project to meet today's market demands while preparing for the market to evolve, which it will. The Mesa Arts District Lofts project employs this strategy by designing the entire frontage along Main Street as space suitable for commercial use. The proposed land-use language would allow up to 50% of this commercial area to have a transitional use that will help activate the streetscape as the market evolves. These uses may have a residential component to them, but will have the visual feel of commercial space, allowing the insides to be flexible based on market drivers. The downtown Mesa commercial corridor will be stronger in the long term by allowing a flexibility of uses as the population and market grows and matures." And I received one final comment card, also in support of this item, from Ryan Wozniak, and he says, "This amendment should be appreciated as an amendment to benefit the proposed development at the former Brown and Brown dealership site. There could be improvements to the phasing to better meet the intent of the Form-Based Code, but a master-plan utility approach to allow the edges of Sir Ryan and Hibbert to fill in later in the future is a decent compromise. If live-work units are built along Main Street to commercial building code requirements, the transition from that to a more active commercial use later is feasible. I am still not sure about the inclusion of multi-unit residential in the allowable uses without some additional outreach to the community. Request: Downtown density and liveliness. My ask would be for another floor of residential. The first floor is basically acting like two floors, so a max of six floors in this configuration should not be cost prohibitive. I ask staff verify the validity of this statement. I believe the construction type would remain the same, and the downtown would benefit from additional density. Request: For additional density to be feasible, it will likely require a parking requirement reduction. This should be supported by best practices of parking practices. The abundance of the parking in downtown provides little market demand to charge for parking, as any healthy downtown should expect to be able to charge a profitable rate for its parking infrastructure, a subsidization distorting the development marketability of our downtown. For projects, their above-average size might benefit from additional requirements. The list of the conditions are to be read, as all of the above apply, which serves to try to protect the intent of the original draft of the code, which was decent but should avoid empty space and setting up market distortions, more subsidies, and the developments per forma. This would have negative ripple effects for all of Main Street retail spaces. Request: Strike the basic multi-unit residential from being allowable to Front Street's main first floor and provide a more specific exception for live-work units and more expensive commercial uses be built to commercial business construction standards. Request: If there's doubt as to this amendment meeting the intent of the original Form-Based Code, allow the community to weigh in through a brief but meaningful public engagement process." And that's all the cards that were submitted for this item.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mickelson. Council, additional discussion on this item?
I had a question, John?
Yes, Jeremy?
Deanne, what was that, the amount for and the amount against on those things that you just read off?
The last comment card?
No, just total.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Yes, there were three in support and two in opposition, too.
And those are all Mesa residents?
No, they are not. One, I believe, is the developer. Dean Newans is the developer, and, let me see who we have here. This Mesa resident, Mesa resident, and Mesa resident, excuse me.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the rest are Mesa residents.
All right. Thank you. Jen, did I see your hand go up?
I just became aware of the numbers on the commercial frontage. The, today's code would require 24,000 square feet along the frontage, and the reduction would allow 12,000. I think 12,000 is very doable. I mean, we have, what, 12 West, and I think they're like a little shy of 20,000 square feet in downtown, so I'm not afraid. I was afraid of 48,000 square feet on a frontage. That's a lot of commercial to fill, but 24,000, I think, I think it's doable. I really think Main Street should have that activation, I believe, in our downtown and its future. I know today, if we were going to lease it today, it'd be extremely hard. I know this is a code amendment, and again, like some other people have mentioned, that more outreach, I think, and discussion needs to be done, but here we are at a time of a decision, and I believe the council is weighing towards approving this, which I can understand, because I've been on the fence for many days on this. I'm going to vote against it, but I want to say that you, to the community and to downtown and to this development, I give it my all to fill that square footage along Main Street. I give it every effort that I have, so that I don't see residential on Main Street if this passes, and I would like to also challenge our community to help with that effort, as well as I appreciate any council members and mayor working to activate that and make that key, key area very successful for downtown success, our sales tax dollars, and our future. We're not filling it today. This is a few, a few years down the road, and I have a commitment to make sure, given this passes, that to see commercial. I would do everything I can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Duff. Council, is there additional discussion? Mr. Thompson?
Mayor, I just want to reiterate from our study session. I mean, I, I understand where those that were opposed to this, this project moving forward, and I understand where they come from. I, I understand their concerns, because those are the exact same concerns I have. But again, after talking with staff and, and the assurances of being able to get a development agreement in place that would allow us to sort of control the, the phasing of the project, to ensure that we give the, the frontage along Main Street the opportunity to, to develop as commercial and retail over time as, as ASU and some of the other projects in downtown get built out, I, I support it simply because of the development grant. If we didn't have a development, if we weren't able to get a development agreement in place, I wouldn't support the code amendment, but I will support it simply because we're able to control with the development agreement in place.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Freeman, and then Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, a perfect example to me is the blending of the current projects we have in downtown. We have City Creek building residential units right on Main Street, right down to the street, large parking structure below, some retail space to the east of that. The Grid is building their project. That's a blend of, obviously, commercial, retail, and other apartment use there, so... So, you know, when we flex these different program or build outs, I just, I look at, there's a great success there, and there's a great template there. And with the amount of square footage we're changing or allowing the developer to utilize, and then building to the specs of commercial or retail space for future, even if it's residential for a time, I think we're all hoping that, and will, retail and commercial will be a focal point to the Main Street area. And as we walk from, I would hope from, let's say, corn all the way west to Country Club, a great area to walk in. But anyway, we have templates there I'd like to see as they get built out. And I think there, as we look at the apartment space that's being built, we're not asking anything extraordinary with this change in this Form-Based Code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Luna?
I'm going to be in support of the changes in the Form-Based Code. I understand that through the development agreement that we can work with the developer to ensure that we develop the lower floors, if you will, into businesses that can really thrive within the city of Mesa. I'm hoping that we can work with Rail Mesa, as well as List, to encourage businesses in that area. I believe this is an opportunity to do this kind of activity. I've also had opus development within District Five of City of Mesa, and they do a tremendous job. They've done outstanding projects, and I'm sure they're going to continue doing that. And then the downtown area is certainly going to be the centerpiece of the downtown. So I will be in support of this.
Thank you. Counsel, other comments? Mr. Freeman?
Sorry, I meant to say this. You know, brick and mortar stores are really, they're hurting today. For them to survive might be difficult in the future. So I don't know what type of commercial we're expecting down with these changes. However, we have to be flexible and adaptable. So that would be my last comment. So I am supporting this change to the Form-Based Code.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Counsel, other discussion? You know, I previously expressed my thoughts on this. I really don't have a lot to add, other than the reason we love the Form-Based Code and the reason we adopted it in downtown is to give flexibility. And I think, again, what we're voting on here is, is 50% retail and restaurant, but this is just expanding the definition of what are the types of use. And, and I think, as was indicated earlier, other types of commercial activity like health clubs and, and office space will bring us that, that downtown excitement and dense urban core atmosphere that we're looking for. And again, to me, additional living space in downtown is not something that I would be horrified to see. So, but again, I'll join my colleagues in saying that we're not voting on the zoning case here. There's going to be additional opportunities for the developer to now take this flexibility and then come back to us with an agreement that will accomplish, I think, our goals for, for this, what will be a very historic project in downtown, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to develop 10 acres in our downtown. Counsel, is there, is there a motion to move this item forward? Thank you, Mr. Thompson made that motion seconded by Mr. Freeman. Any additional discussion? Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker? I'm sorry, was that nay?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. And I vote aye as well. So the motion passes five ayes and two nays. The next item on our agenda is items from citizens present. Ms. Mickelson, I believe we do have requests to speak under this item, do we not?
Yes, just one request, Mayor. And she requests, or she requests that her comments be read.
Please proceed.
Okay. Queen Nawa Johnson, and she says, Hello, and I hope all is well. I apologize if this is not the best of writing, but please understand the importance of this comment and cry for help I am presenting. My name is Queen Nawa Johnson. I am an African-American resident in Mesa who is concerned with the recent and ongoing killings that are happening at the hands of police and with the rise of upfront racism. In the past, we have seen Mesa police use excessive force towards not only the black community, but those like Daniel Shaver, who as a white man begged for his life and so be put down as if he were an animal up for game. Countless times, we've watched lives be taken away and ripped apart due to the careless and unsympathetic actions of police brutality. As if that weren't enough to worry about, racism still seems to simmer the streets of Mesa and appears to be tolerated by the officials. I am asking that while you are requesting approval for police upgrades and contract renewals, that you keep in mind the people that are, that they are policing. I am asking that in these tragic times, you offer a sigh of relief for those who work, live, pay taxes, and raise their families here in Mesa. I am asking that you verbally and visually stand with us and help us feel supported and honored. Not only do we live and work here, we vote and we support those who ask us for it. At what point, though, do we get to see the promises that are made while asking for our votes? At what point do we get to see ourselves uplifted, loved, supported, or even trusted? At what point do you look at yourself in the mirror and say, Today, I did all I could for the people who support me? White votes are not the only votes that you got into those positions. It's easy to come to our neighbors and shake our hands when the votes are needed, but what about walking hand in hand with us when you're needed? Your silence is compliance to all that is going on, and so I ask at you not only hold your police accountable, but speak up for those voices who feel they aren't being heard. We ask that the police take a stance in changing how they deal with the people in their community in which they took an oath to protect and serve. We do, we do not feel protected, and we don't feel like we are being served. My children and I have had talks I never thought we would have to have. Their innocence is taken away, not because of anything they witnessed at the hands of the community, but what they see and hear about the police. It's true, not all cops are bad, but when you have the good ones looking away and the city protecting them, it's a painful wound that keeps trying to get cleaned with alcohol. My husband, who works 16 hours to provide, is beloved by his employers, and his resident has been a victim of racial profiling. We're reduced to the lowest forms. Meanwhile, there has been proof that all races come with their bad apples. Ours are just picked and displayed for everyone to see, and that's that. I don't want this to be a black versus white issue, although it can be, but I believe in humanity and seeking change. I believe that if I knock on the door long enough, someone will answer, and I believe that if I love hard enough, hate will drive itself out. This is a cry that comes from a place of love, because I love Mesa and I love that I spent my childhood here. I love that my kids get to go to the school I went to as a kid. Although I moved away in my teens and early adult life, I am here now, and I am willing to fight with and for what's right. Baby steps is what I am asking. You can start by not being silent and saying that you support the community and their pain, that you hear us and see us. I've watched the residents of Scottsdale plead for protection and support and put their city on a pedestal. Now I'm asking the same for our city and our people. Please allow your hearts to rule, and it's God you serve that you know what's right. And if not, may the God I serve reveal you, reveal to you what is. Thank you, and I hope that my words are taken into consideration. I couldn't put into words all I needed and wanted to say, but this was a first step to many. The next one I hope you'll take with me. And those are all the comment cards for this item.
All right, well, thank you. That was quite a poignant letter, and I appreciate her submitting that. I'll just remind anyone who might be watching that, unfortunately, because the topics that she expressed are not an agenda item in our council meeting, we can't specifically have that discussion that she's inviting us to have. But I assure you that, as I indicated earlier in this meeting, we, we take these issues very seriously, and we are taking steps to have those conversations in our community. That concludes the items on our agenda for this meeting, is, if I would, I'd invite the council to please unmute your microphones, and we'll do a voice vote adjourned meeting. Maybe we will. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.